How do I know what the, what the project is?
Right.
And it's, it says that it's a part of that letter or part of the
Oh, and it's attached?
It's not there.
Okay, I can, I can send it to you. If you want to, um, I can send you proposals.
I don't know. It's more just scope of work. What are we talking about?
On the Zoom, you can probably share.
Sure, okay.
If it, or we can just have Amy post it, but I don't know, I don't know what's in it. Like if it's something that needs to be seen. Um, I can hold on.
Oh, no, I, so I wrote it down and I, yes, we never got to connect. It was about some of the presentations that I got to see at the V S A. They were the ones that, yeah, Anthony, about like access to information.
Oh, yeah.
It was just stuff that I hadn't wondered myself. Because one of the board, you know, one of the board members is blind. And so we were just talking about, you know, needing the houses. But I mean, I I don't have the pictures coming up. So their hand is
Wait, I mean, that next one.
I worked on a question.
Yeah, you got support.
Like if I
You don't want me on TV?
I just That's on top of that, sorry. Like, do you team? Is it only at this ramp or is it?
No, by time that season.
Are you sure?
Hmm?
Okay, let's put it on there. Thank you, sorry. And this wasn't
Do you need something about the state?
Are you that's what everybody wants to see?
You think? No, that's just the, that's the moving of, oh, and right, that is the moving, like, the funds that were generated from some of the check for phone.
No.
So every time we receive it, you know,
Okay.
This is like, oh, we have nothing to drive on.
The land is beautiful.
It, I mean, it is different from the Maritex on it because it's frozen. It's all in colors. Yeah, yeah. Yes. And a verse is different from a lot of the other lots of
Like reference is a thing they all inclusive. Operating credits for
So that was my feeling.
He was in a scooter.
I don't see the kids scooting around like
It was some sort of
Yeah, obviously, he's a really smart
Yeah.
Around like doing an ACL brace. For adjustable time.
Boy, I started, I got one out of a carrot.
Do you have one of your grandkids every, every other We did this yesterday to work.
You guys haven't been scared.
People know the better. Paris Hall, that's it.
Dave Frederick said that he was traveling and isn't going to make it. And Beth has a conflicting meetings. They should all of the heroes. You just
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, Scott's lights and
Dee Swift.
It was
Swift and Tori is his stuff, huh?
It was so fun. Yeah. And we were talking phones, talking about all the ones that we wanted to see. And now they're all coming up. I saw before, so I've been having a texting last night like, whoa, I'm going to Franco's. I'm going to Mass Mokos.
I'll need a Franco, take me back to senior year.
That's right.
Last year.
I'd have to go back a few more groups.
Like I was in college.
That seemed fun for him.
I got the dress code memo.
I know.
And most years was the stand number band.
Oh, yeah. That was still around.
At the old Boston Garden.
All right, it's six o'clock. Um, welcome to the meeting of Mount Anthony Union High School District 14 Board of Directors. Special meeting today is Tuesday, December 3rd. Just going to take a minute and have everyone go around the room to say who we are so that Richard can note it for the minutes.
Mike Malloy, Athletics and Athletics Director, High School, Middle School.
Tim Payne, High School Principal.
Chris McQuire, Middle School Principal.
Scott McEnany, Board Member.
Stephanie Mulligan, Board Chair.
Kim Gopkin, SVSU Superintendent.
Yes, a board member. Katie Aiken, Board Member.
Glenn Dervor, Board Member.
Kristen Olstead, Board Member.
Leon Johnson, Board Member. And we have a guest chair there.
And Richard, I'm Renee Gordon's here, just hiding.
As well as Holly Anderson.
Yeah.
One member of the audience, Brandon.
Yep, ex-board member.
Um, okay, I'd like to start with public comments.
That would be me. Yeah, one, people are wondering when, obviously, I just seen the agenda on the wall out there. When you're going to the next run at the Spinelli Field, which basically people don't mind pitching Spinelli Field, but they don't want the turf. And also I would assume that's what that's for. The other thing they're concerned about, they didn't know if the MAU Board was in bed with the Bennington Sled Board on letting 16 and 17-year-old folk and non-citizens. I don't know what, who laid these people direct in, but hopefully, I don't, I hope this board is just going to play that game because they think it's going to hurt you more than anything else. So I just mentioned that, I'm curious to see about your donations for Spinelli Field and all this stuff. So I'll end it with that for now.
People just, there was a discussion of Benny, like the Charter for Committee, the Charter Review Committee for Bennington Town presented their suggestions, right? And that one of those was to explore. It has nothing to do with, with this one. Uh, for
Yeah.
16, 17-year-olds still
There are other in local, yeah. But this is nothing, it's not on the agenda, has nothing to do
I just thought I'd mention that because I, that's one way you probably get your turf field. And it's not the right way, but anyway.
Good idea.
That is, thank you.
Wait, wait. Ability to take
I think at this point, it's
Your multi-town board that all those
One of the things that was noted in it was that it would confuse that one of the challenges for Bennington would be that, like, in local elections, you'd have school ballots and it would be very, it would be confusing. Thank you, Fran. Uh, we're going to go on to operations. Um, MAU Kitchen then.
Yeah, so Renee's going to help me with the funding. Um, but basically, there's a pot of money in the SVSCU Food Service Account backdating from meals we served during COVID and got reimbursed from the federal government. Um, it hovers around 1.9 million. Uh, and we've identified with the Abbey Group and others uh, that we'd like to take the food service funds and renovate the MAU Kitchen um, as part of the ventilation project with our Besser. We didn't, we didn't really touch it because it needs more than what we had funds available for. Uh, the vent hood is held up by like lolly columns that you have in your basement holding up beams. Um, and we'd like to cut it, bring it up to current industry standards and make it flexible for the future. So, um, we're bringing up, bringing this to the SVS. We're at their next meeting to approve the funds, but first we need to make sure the MAU Board would like to move forward with renovating the kitchen.
So, so food services maintained at the supervisory union level. So they oversee food service operations, the contract with our um, food service management company. So the funds are there and essentially the SU Board has to approve it, but you own the building. So you really need to be on board with whether or not you want the money to be invested in the building. And then ultimately, the SU Board will have the say, and if they want to use the funds for that purpose. We have been spending them down um, for various equipment improvements and kitchens from Fisher and Arlington Memorial, like all throughout the SU. Uh, but just to, to spend it down in one big lump, this project would be able to do that. So I can answer any questions? Would this cover the entire amount of this project?
Yep, uh, so the plan is, is we advertise design services. Um, because we really want to have a comprehensive look at the mechanical, electric like how it flows and how it works, what we, how it's laid out. Um, and so, yes, it would cover design services, any soft costs and also the consumption.
So how do we find a build down in the kitchen, new commercial cooking?
Yeah, Liam.
Is that one of the items off that list that we had, priority list of things that we had set up? They said we're going to go through the school and replace, is the kitchen one of those items?
Yep, it is, it is, it's on the master plan.
From a student perspective, it, this work, is it entirely behind the scenes? Or will it have a positive impact on students from what, what they're being served or how they're, how it's being served?
Yeah, so it would, it would be the kitchen itself, serving people in the kitchen, and then how the server operates and what the offerings can be um, based on new kitchen equipment, um, electrical upgrades, so they can have more machines and they're doing different things. Um, I know we've talked about different things like panini presses and, and um, different options that we'd be able to offer based on this renovation.
Oh, is there also money for that? Remember, we've been talking about the, the new entrance and one of the things that we did with Spinelli Field is tried to, you know, put some signage and we did it with the baseball and softball and we added some, you know, just some signs. And I know we've been, I've been pushing for that main entrance that everybody uses to come into the cafeteria and needs some, you know, a little bit of, a little bit of pop.
Yeah, that's the main entrance for the auditorium and the gym. Uh, and so part of the scope of work for design services was the approach to that area and how we can make that flex, flexible. You know, one of the possibilities that we've talked about is taking out that curtain of glass and putting overhead doors so that during nice weather, students can go outside. Um, but all that needs to be
So this is more than kitchen work, this is
Yeah.
And so student seating area?
Yeah, so the, um, the student seating, for the most part, the student seating area, we've already conditioned the space, it's all air conditioned. We have new cafeteria tables, including high tops and smaller ones, so there's a variety of seating options. The space has also been painted and cleaned. Um, so my license is it wouldn't really affect that main area. It would mostly be kitchen, server, and then that outside deck where that used to be the smoking area.
It's just, yeah, it's underutilized right now.
We should take up smoking again, as I said.
Okay, but so are there any other questions? Or so are you asking, what are you asking?
So I'm asking for a motion to move forward with design services uh, to renovate the MAU Kitchen, Servery and adjacent areas. So
And do you, are, do you want to award the bid today? Is that what you're requesting?
It really, we just need to make sure that the NAU Board is okay with this work.
Oh, so SVSU is going to
But it's your building.
But it's our building.
Okay.
So Leon moved it and we had a second. Jalen, okay, um, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much, please.
Um, finance, donations, Spinelli Field.
Uh, so months and months and months ago, um, the board opted to allow fundraising to begin. There was an account set up with a school funder, there were several different, different options that were looked at. School funder was ultimately the one that was going to yield the largest return without a lot of fees. So that account was open. Um, I think some promotional work was done, um, since the vote failed again. Left it open for a little bit, but the account has been closed. So the, um, school funder sent a check for $4,197.60. Essentially, it's almost like a donation coming in, um, to the school district. And we will ultimately use that for something related to this Spinelli complex, you know, whether it's track, field, lights, could be used for anything. That's how we, you know, promoted it as part of the fundraising effort. So we just need the board to accept that. And then I was planning to just have it in a separate fund, not necessarily a separate bank account, but we'll, we'll isolate the money to sit there until the board decides if and how they want to use it. So just looking for the board to accept the money essentially tonight.
A motion to accept
Second.
Uh, motion by Scott, second by
It was me.
Um, any discussion? All in favor? We're going to move on to the consent agenda. We have, um, minutes from October 16th, uh, warrants, um, retirement. We have a retirement and that's it for the consent agenda. And I have a motion to approve, um, all as motion by Glenn.
Second.
Um, any discussion? Uh, all in favor? You'll save?
Yeah, I wasn't in the last meeting, or I was, so for the minutes.
Okay, let's Scott abstaining. We have, um, we're going to move on to the FY 26 budget review.
Marked up.
It's you.
I'm going to share my screen, so if anybody is at home watching see what we're going to be looking at. Um, so in the packet, which is also posted with the agenda tonight, um, I have all of pages numbered consecutively so we can reference them as we need to going through. Um, as I typically do, uh, take the budget and break it out into categories, first of all. And then there's an associated narrative, so that's pages one, two, and three in the packet. Um, then I also take the budget and break it out by function, which essentially collapses all of the budget categories together. And then you're looking at them by function. So that's, um, pages four and five, the narrative associated with that being pages six to nine. On page 10, we have, um, what I try to share every year, it's just kind of a list of acronyms because we know we kind of live in alphabet city with all the acronyms we use, um, in this realm. So that's there. And then pages 11 through 17 are the budget, kind of by both the budget category and function. So it's giving you more detail. But my, my goal is to not bury you with information because this budget line by line is well over 2,000 lines of numbers. So condensing it to hopefully make it a little bit more digestible. And then, uh, the final page of the packet, which we'll get into a little bit later, is just the FTEs that are broken out by, um, kind of by function or department as well that are associated with the budget that you have in front of you today. So to jump right in, um, the salaries and benefit lines, we know aren't the, the biggest drivers of our budgets every year. Um, we do have collective bargaining agreements for both teachers and support staff that negotiated last year. So what, what we have in place, we know is not a, a projection for next year. Like we know what those increases are going to be. So based on the staff that we currently have, um, we've gone ahead and bumped those up per the collective bargaining agreements. And I do have a factor in for those few people that actually aren't part of any collective bargaining unit. So those would be our non-union employees. So that has been incorporated. Um, a couple of adjustments in working with Mike on Appendix C. I think, you know, the board that topped a few months ago about middle school lacrosse. So we've added that in. Um, Mike also has really feels strongly that, uh, the, the drama department should be broken out into seasons similar to, you know, other sports because of the productions that they put on. So I have included that in the budget you have before you. So the fall and the spring production, or not just the, um, advisor, but all of the associated things that go with it. So, you know, the sets and the lights and so on and so forth. Um, and then also in this budget, um, many of you may be aware that we were awarded a 21st Century Grant um, at the SU level. So this is covering after-school program, programming and summer programming for all of our schools. As part of that grant, we do have matching requirements. So, uh, one thing that we used the last chunk of S R money for was to fund our summer programming. And we have essentially used up all of the remaining funding that we had in local budgets. And what has been awarded through the grant will get us through the end of June and after-school programming for next year, but we need money for summer. So I have included, uh, summer programming for the middle school and high school in this budget. Um, so it's all, it's in salaries, but you're also, um, it's touching benefits associated with salaries. Um, contracted services, transportation and supplies are also 21C. And again, I have not scrolled, sorry for the folks that are So those are the salary highlights that I just touched upon. And then the benefits. Big drivers, health insurance. These, uh, benefits are negotiated at the state level, so we really don't have any say whatsoever in them. Um, VHI, the Vermont Education Health Initiative manages the health insurance plans for all school districts throughout the state. They have the foods, the rates, as you see them there on the screen for next year, uh, to the Department of Congressional Protection. Thus far, in, in my career in this position, um, D F R has always approved their rates, but VHI always says to us, we have to make them back and say, you don't have enough in reserves, you need to raise the rates even more. Um, hasn't happened yet. I have a doubt they would say your rates are too high. Um, so okay, at 11.9%. So essentially, what's negotiated is that the employer pays 80% or for support staff who aren't quite at that 80/20 split yet. Um, that of a gold CDHP or silver CDHP plan. So of course, out of the four plans that are available, those are the two with the highest increases. So, um, those have been factored into the budget that we have before you with current benefit elections. Um, we don't have very many vacancies right now, but typically, when we do have a vacancy in the budget, the budget, middle of the road in terms of somebody, a teacher that might be coming in with some experience, but not at the very beginning and not at the very high end. So based on what we know now, that's in the budget. So could be variations, but typically doesn't happen too, too often. As I mentioned, the, the support staff has been on the sliding scale for the past few years, again, statewide negotiated, that every January 1st, there's an uptick of 1% for the support staff contributions to their health insurance premiums. Um, so the one, one final tick will get, uh, I think our, our support staff to 80, 81%. So one more round will get them to the 80/20 split that, uh, teachers and professional staff have been at for several years. So taking that into account, um, in this budget as well. Uh, we do know that the Vermont Municipal Employees Retirement System will increase as of July 1st by another quarter of a percent. This has been happening for the past several years. So that has been factored in for those folks that are, um, covered by that retirement system. Essentially, anybody that's not a licensed educator. The licensed educators participate in Vermont State Teacher Retirement System that the employer does not actually contribute a percentage to you. But there are several assessments that employer, when, when I say employer, I'm talking about the school districts um, that get charged. So the next item I have on here is the new teacher healthcare assessment. So if any new teacher that we have coming in that is new to, um, the Vistors, so Vermont State Teacher Retirement System on or after July 1st, 2015, annually, we have to pay. This past year was $1,542. So it's a one-time fee that they charge us every year. Typically, we're seeing it go up anywhere from 70 to $110 a year. So I've factored a small increase, um, for those folks that are currently being assessed that. And then new positions, I'm assuming that they're coming in without, um, having been part of Vistors that long. So that has been factored in as well. And thankfully, the dental rates are flat once again, so no changes in there. Um, but what you're also seeing in that benefit line is, you know, the, the taxes associated with employment. So it's our, just, you know, our FICA, also workers' comp, unemployment, taxes like that. So any questions before I move on to contracted services? So no changes, no, no position, new positions requested this year, pretty straightforward. So no changes, no, no position, new positions requested this year, pretty straightforward. The next two lines are contracted services and operations. So contracted services is a wide-range category. Some of the highlights, this, this current year that we're in, we had a contract, we had a contract with the Centers for Restorative Justice split between both campuses. This budget includes a continuation of that with a small increase, which we typically see with our contracts with UCS annually. Some for student services, they provide us a number of clinicians. So that is included. Tutoring services, I've, I've made some small increases on those budgets, because what, what we've seen historically, we've been a little bit under what our expenses are. This is not just the tutorial center. This could be for teen parent education through Sunrise. It's also any students that we have that might be hospitalized that are receiving tutoring services, which we often see through a company called Learn Well. That's where this, this line is funding those services. We have some building-specific professional learning budgets that I, I put in. And then for athletics and activities, arbiter pay. If you recall, I think we're in year two of paying officials through this platform, which makes things super easy and fast for Mike to be able to do that. So there's a flat fee that we pay annually, because we signed a four-year extension with them. We know what we've locked into those rates for the next couple of years. And it goes up by roughly a hundred dollars every year for that. And then we do have a, a budget in for the digital platform that Athletics and Activities is using now for digital participation forms. So that is what's in the contracted services, along with, you know, any, anything that has to be inspected, like our ropes course has to be inspected, and our hoods have to be inspected, and fire extinguishers. So things of that routine nature are budgeted in there. We also have students that require some vision services, which is through a contract, so that's there. And then truancy, we have any truancy calls that are being provided through the Bennington County Sheriff's Department. We're paying that out of the contracted service as well. The operations bucket is another kind of large one that encompasses quite a few items. So I do have kind of an italics there, a description. So it's all of our utilities, repairs, maintenance, any leases that we have, insurance, travel reimbursements, printing, advertising, communications, so on and so forth. So we do have a few equipment leases that have been paid off. So I've reduced what the payments are, pulled those out of the budgets. We do, are projecting some increases in utilities with all the new equipment that we have in, in the buildings, thanks to the ESSER projects, and forecasting some increases to our liability insurance premiums. Also in here, a new item for this year, it's a proposed vehicle lease, similar to what Student Services is renting. It's an SUV, so I think it seats six or seven. We've been renting cars through Enterprise, or coaches have been driving, you know, for golf tournaments, or students that may be participating in very few numbers, whether it's, you know, at New England's or Nationals or something like that. So it would support athletics, but also community-based learning, which is growing in popularity. So we are using a contract, contracted provider to do some of our community-based learning, transportation. But again, we're just to offer some flexibility. So the budget that you have before you does include a vehicle lease for, you know, a, a larger SUV, not anything that would be so large that it would require the driver to have special license or be CDL licensed. And we already have this kind of in play with Student Services. So I knew pretty, pretty much what to expect, which the insurance increase is going to be. So I factored that in as well. I do have a placeholder in for projects. Holly's working on that with Tony right now, so I don't know if that number that I have in is going to go up or down. But those are still to be determined. So then the next couple of lines, we have transportation and tuition. So transportation, what you're seeing here in this line is really just the cost for field trips, athletics, community-based learning. This does not include the school district's cost for transportation to and from school. That is actually going to be included in the assessment line that we'll see a little bit later. The tuition line is a couple of things. This is mainly Southwest Tech, which we don't have numbers from the agency yet on what the six semester average is for students enrolled at the tech center, nor the other pieces of information that we calculate for the on-behalf and tuition supplemental informa- or supplemental monies that come in to support the tech center. So essentially, I've just flat-level funded those for right now until I get the information that I need, and then I'll certainly adjust them. And then we also have a couple of students that are on out-of-district placements that are not through Student Services, so they're not on individual education plans. So it ends up being a local expense, and we anticipate those placements continuing. So we factored in the tuition for them as well. The next lines we have are the supplies and equipment. Supplies does encompass quite a few things, and this isn't just, you know, classroom supplies. This is also going to be supplies for our janitorial staff, paint for the fields, you know, things for the principal's office, guidance, so on and so forth. So not just, you know, supplies, your pens, pencils, you know, includes books, anything that would fall below our capitalization threshold, which essentially means anything with a single value of less than five thousand dollars. So a computer technically falls under supply. And then we have a lot of online software subscriptions for, it used to be, well, I think Lexia is something that the schools use. IXL got pulled out last year because that's being provided at the SU level. But there's, there's multiple things, and typically, we see a small uptick in what those subscriptions and online licenses are annually. So those have been factored in. And then you can see, like, the, the difference, like, we've pulled a lot out of equipment, and, you know, the supplies are increasing for, for some of those reasons there. But then also, we really have been trying to move the money to where it's going to be spent from. We unfortunately have a lot of requests for folks to be able to put purchase order in. Money has to be in the correct line, and I, I try to keep the budget locked down, so don't overspend anything. In order to do that, if the money's not where it's going to be spent from, they have to request a budget transfer from my staff. So it just takes time, you know, the process that, you know, they have to request it, they have to input it, approve it, communicate that, but it's okay. So it's just, I'm trying to, you know, work through, looking at, you know, the three years of budgets to actuals, where are we seeing the money being spent from? And just trying to put the money where, where it should be. So clearly, the equipment lines have been used. Unfortunately, furniture fixtures and equipment, you think furniture, a desk, most desks we buy aren't going to be five thousand dollars. So I do actually have seventy thousand dollars in this budget that is allotted for classroom furniture and new teachers' desks and chairs. I really should be flipping that up to the supply line, because none of it's going to be more than five thousand dollars eventually. But that, that is some of the remaining hundred and two, hundred and two thousand dollars that you see in that equipment line, along with some possible grounds, I think was the other item that we had a placeholder in. Oh, and kitchen equipment, which that rides there every year. And that, I honestly, I end up taking that money and usually having to flip it to the repair and maintenance line. So if, you know, refrigerator goes down, or, you know, the ice maker doesn't make an ice anymore, and the contractor has to come and service call, we're paying that out of the repairs and maintenance for, for our kitchens. So as I said, furniture replacements are included in that line, but I really should reallocate that back up to the supply line. And then the next two dues and fees and assessments. So dues and fees encompass mainly, and free fees, a lot mainly for athletics. Do you have, you know, students that participate in music festivals? Any students that are going anyplace on a field trip that requires admission? Anything out of there, bank fees are included in that line, as well as memberships to professional organizations there. And on the assessments, I took what the, the first pass at the SVSU budget that was presented last week and put that into our assessment sheet. However, many asterisks I have put with this. So number one, I don't have a first draft of long-term weighted average daily membership yet. We use that to proportionally assess out the cost essentially for most of the SVSU costs. So my department, HR, administration, those get allocated out between all the member districts proportionately based on our long-term weighted ADM. I've used basically what we had as our final numbers for this current year. We've done our first pass at fund balances, so we've applied that. But also too, we need to go back through and take a look at what our extraordinary or projected extraordinary special education costs are going to be, and apply that. So that'll take that number down a little bit. But again, I just, I don't know what the long-term weighted average daily membership is going to look like. Now, for numbers, you're going down, then the assessments will go down. But if they've gone up, then the assessments will go up. So as soon as I get numbers from the agency, I'll certainly refine these and keep them updated with the most current information. But the, the budget that was presented to the SU was just over ten percent. I am going to, you know, clearly try to work to, to whittle that down. But with the fund balances, the increase here is eight point eight-five percent. The last bond for the middle school is being paid off this year. So we get to pull that out of the budget, hundred and fifteen thousand dollars was the principal payment on that. That forty thousand dollars that remains there is for potential short-term borrowing needs, which we haven't had to do the last few years because of the ESSER money. We've got so much money going through the SU that our cash balances and our local districts have remained relatively high. But now that that money's gone, we're going to see the spending start to hit, and the cash flow probably returns to what it had been typically in the fall. So before taxes are collected by the towns and turned over to the school districts at this time, every year, we do usually dip into the red through the, the later fall months and have to operate on borrowed funds. So in anticipation that will return there, that's just the interest expense that would be associated with that. And then the contingency, something that we have in there every year, no post-changes at this point. So with that, I'll stop sharing for a couple of moments to let you breathe and digest. And if there's any questions, otherwise I can keep on plowing through.
When, when is it normal for the, the long-term weighted average daily membership to not be here yet? Where's this A?
The, so the, the Finance Director for the Agency of Education, who had been there for years and years and years, retired about a year and a half ago. He was replaced. The girl that was here last year was phenomenal. She just left, and they do not have replacement for her. So a lot of things seem to be delayed at this point. I did reach out to the agency last week to ask them, "When are we going to see this data?" Because typically, I would have some of it by now. He was hoping, so when I say he, the person who's the deputy CFO for the agency is now the acting interim CFO, because the CFO also left. So I think he's still doing his old job as.
And, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. They're, they're short-staffed.
Yeah.
And, and we're feeling it to see if it was, yeah. So, okay, thank you.
Laura, are you sitting on the debt services? That's all we have left for the middle school is forty thousand dollars left?
No, so that, the, the hundred and fifteen thousand dollars will be paid off this year. So I, I pulled that out of the FY twenty-six budget. And the forty thousand dollars, I have in there as a placeholder in case we have to borrow money in a, in a tax anticipation note for FY twenty-six. So now the forty thousand dollars is just a possible interest expense for short-term borrowing.
But we got a hundred and twenty-six thousand, you're saying?
That was this year's.
That's the left, I mean, we're done now.
Yes, we, we will be done, yes, th- this fiscal year. All, all the bonds will be paid off.
Our friend would be happy with that. We're going to work, but that's payment. More to come. Yes.
Also, before I share my screen and, you know, questions, I'm not going to go through the, the next section in nearly as great detail, just a couple of things that I wanted to point out. So I won't even pull up the narrative. So the budget by category, or by, I'm sorry, by department or function, quite a bit longer, ends up being two pages. But essentially, you know, like, looking at the direct instruction line, that is everything, everything. So that's included, you know, your salaries, your benefits, your contracted services, tuition. You know, if there's transportation, anything, that's all collapsed into that one line. Direct instruction includes things like our sixth-rate teachers at the middle school. We don't actually have them broken out by department. We also budget here money for our team leaders, head teachers, substitutes, tuition services, so, you know, those folks that might be assessing, accessing the tutorial center or Sunrise Services or Learn Well. That's what's budgeted there. We also have assessments in this line, too, for English language learners. And we have two paras that are employed by the SU, but one at middle school, one at the high school that directly get assessed to the district. So that's included in that line. So just to kind of paint a picture of what, what you're seeing here. Mainly in all of these categories, it's staff salaries and benefits changes. Maybe some minor tweaks here and there, just some supply lines. When you look at the computer line, this is, you know, the payoff of those leases. So that has been reduced. But again, as you're kind of scrolling down through, it's based on current staff and current benefit elections, which have changed, you know. So some of them are up, some of them are down. The, the phys ed, I think we have a couple of planned repairs, replacements, just some supplies. So that's been factored in. Alternative programs, I have an adjusted stipends, but the, the fees associated or benefits associated with that, so that's why a small increase there. Special education, that's your assessment for special education. So currently looking like a reduction. However, this is actually including adding one point four FTEs for board-certified behavior analysts. That number should come down when we look at the extraordinary reimbursements and get those factored in to the assessments. Southwest Tech, I haven't touched yet again, because I just don't have the information from the agency. Community-based learning includes the vehicle lease and insurance. Community-based learning includes the vehicle lease and insurance. Athletics and activities is going to include, again, half of the other, other half of vehicle lease and insurance. Along with increases to the appendix C. Our contract would do for, for regular transportations are in there. And I think on my narrative, just to point out, I did neglect to include the vehicle lease and insurance under the athletic category. But it is definitely in the numbers that you're seeing. And then the, the student support, this is, whoops, sorry, the 2190 student support. This is where our behavior. Supports our staff, but this is also where we have the 21st century funding. Personal programming and increase for summer programming. The Board of Education is mainly comprised of assessments. The debt service, you can see again, just here in, in this format, the reduction of the, the principal and interest associated with the bond payments. One thing I, I didn't mention before, and I'm. In a bit of a debate right now with our attorney on if we're presenting our Southwest Tech numbers correctly. So we've been. The, the way that Southwest Tech is not taxing entity. So they essentially are raising money through the school districts that are sending students to Southwest Tech. So that's why we kind of bat those numbers out so you can see what the Mount Anthony budget truly is. But we also have to factor in their costs when we talk about what our education spending is per pupil. So when we get a little bit further down the road and we're looking at our warnings for, for March, when we're ready to warn the budget. Do have to factor that in, but their budgets are voted on separately. So that's why we, we identify things that way. And you can clearly see I haven't adjusted those numbers for the FY26 budget, yeah. I guess in the last thing that I wanted to. Share through the packet. So this is the final page of the packet is just the current FTEs. What I have at the, the top of this is the student count as of September. The October numbers I received had four fewer students at the high school, so down to 871. The low income numbers that I are, that I'm showing here, these are pulled from. Our consolidated federal programs, also known as title grants. They pulled that out of our grants management system. So essentially the state is taking our student data from. One source and uploading it into the grants management system. So that is what our income looks like between the two schools. And then these are just FTE counts, so administration, secretarial support, the admin other. Were kind of folks that didn't really fit into other categories. So these are like in-school suspension supervisors. At the middle school, we have a hall monitor and crossing guard, so she's in there.
Who are HHB coordinators?
HHB coordinators in there as well, maker space facilitator. And then at the high school, in-school suspension, and then the family engagement specialist. I think the other ones are pretty straightforward. As we scroll down through. But again, the, the budget that you have before you includes all of these FTEs. No, no requested changes at this point in time. The, the half that you're seeing for our custodial is a split of Tony. But we also have a land steward at the middle school who's part-time. So half Tony and her make a whole number at the middle school, but half of Tony remains at the high school level. So there's the split there. And then the, the two at the bottom. The local paras, these are actually SVSU employees, but we track their expenses separately. So we know exactly those positions and we directly assess those to the district. So that's why I've included them here, much, much more difficult to do with student services staff because they tend to kind of float around a little bit more. And there's one more thing that was not in your packet. This was, the NESDEC group did a, a study, best educational, use of educational facilities for the Southwest. Vermont Union Elementary School District. And as part of that, they had enrollment projections. In there and because of that, Mount Anthony was included. So I just wanted to share the simple projections. Front page is current and historic, the back page is what they're projecting. For like another 10 years, I think we. So historic numbers on the first page. The second page, well, and then they have the note there at the bottom that over the past eight years, grades six or 12 enrollment has declined. 71 students. And then this is the projected enrollment. See the numbers are coming downward.
It's the same all over the state though. We're still the fifth largest high school in the state, like everybody else is.
So they're projecting another decrease of 74 students. That's 10 years. With all that happy information, I'll stop talking.
First, let me say thank you, Renee, for the presentation and all the work you put into this. Need to get to this.
Only the beginning.
Are there any questions for right now? I mean, I'm assuming we're, the action is more to set dates for future.
Yeah, my hope is that we can look at draft two at your regular, um, regular board meeting, which would be the eighth. And then I was assuming that we probably wouldn't be. Again, I'm afraid I'm not going to have information, you know, to. The, the December first letter came out yesterday. There's a new.
I just said you weren't going to mention that.
There's a new factor that is coming into play with tax rate calculation. So I don't have the pieces to be able to get to a projected tax rate calculation because I don't have long-term weighted ADM. You typically won't see the common level of appraisal numbers. Late January, I think by statute, we're supposed to have it by January 1st. So probably the early part of January, we'd be looking to look at a third graph. Or at least, you know, where we are with draft number two. And how that's drilling down to a potential tax rate. They just, they don't have the numbers yet. But for those of you that, that watched or came to the workshop that I had for budgeting, I touched upon. As if the calculation's not complex enough, they're adding in a statewide CLA adjustment. So that's going to be on the property yield number, which is included in the December 1st letter. So they've already factored that in, which I'm not really sure how, because it's only an estimate at this point. So I really have got a lot of pieces to pull together to be able to get there. So just more fun, more fun to come.
Thank you for putting that, I'm sure. I heard a lot of work last week. If there's nothing else on this, we're going to move on to action item, or to actually, I don't know, set for this admin contract reopening.
We've had a request for reopening of the administrators' contract. Administrators, in this case, are principals and vice principals, so it's not central office administrators. Two school boards employ these administrators, that would be the Union Elementary Board and the. She does not employ any one who's, who's employed under the administrators' contract. So there was a request made to reopen it from that association, they're an association. At the Union Elementary Board, they did vote to honor that request, but it takes two boards to vote to do it. So this board would have to also vote that they want me, you're under no obligation to, to. Offer anything different there in your two or three-year contract, they have one more year under their existing contracts. But I would recommend that you just need to have them here, give them out, but it would take a vote of the board to do that. But then anything that that, you would form a committee to meet with them. And anything that that committee did would have to come back to both boards for any change. So it's just a first step in the process.
So the motion would be to just open the admin contract for renovations.
Leon moved it. Jay, hold a second. Any discussion on this?
Okay, no discussion, all in favor? That motion carries.
And we will be looking for a representative from this board to meet with them.
One. Do we need a break tonight?
No, you could do it at your 18th meeting if you want. You as chair point. Just to, just remember, just to be clear, the chair points to all committees other than the SU, that's vote. Who's the SU reps?
Okay, moving on, we have the chair's report. I don't have anything to say other than I had the. I had the opportunity to see the Drama Club's Beauty and the Beast performance and it was fantastic. And I'm really glad that we're supporting, having two different funds for them to use so that they can.
They put in a lot of hours for that.
The water festival, yes, it was very good, so. That is it for me, there's an FYI, there's an internal financial controls document for FY26. I think we have to show that every, you just need to show that to us every year as such.
Yeah, it, it gets presented to the SU board. Basically, the SU board just recognizes that I've given it to them and they just circulate it as an FYI to all the other member districts.
And then there's also the Vermont NEA mini grant, which is $500. If I, is this the one that we've received?
You gave me.
I guess, so this is something that Renee had contacted me on, they needed it within a timeframe that we didn't have a board. And so I accepted it on behalf of the board for $500, so that thing.
Isn't it, the, the funds are, she needed to get paperwork back to the NEA to get the funds in process to get here. Because she wants to have everything in place this month to, for an activity beginning of next month, so at the middle school.
Given the, the amount of money, it was very significant, it is a nice branch, so. If there's no other decision.
I just mentioned one, going back to the negotiations, if anyone was interested could reach out to you. You could announce it by the 18th, who it's going to be, so we can get going on the process. And I apologize for the late notice that you received, there was some board training around school board association. It was going to take place tomorrow night, but there's a number of conflicts for many people. And also with my announcement that I'm leaving, the Ron School Board Association felt that it'd be better to push it off to. After the election. After the spring, right, so, but that's your, that's your choice, that's not, that was the suggestion from. The facilitator for that, but wait till. She said to me, but it wasn't going to, it was not going to happen.
Until.
Tomorrow night, and now with what the weather looks like, maybe it's not a bad. As of now, there is school on Thursday, so as much as people have already reached out to me.
And then in terms of the contract, the contract negotiation, I think I'm going to talk to Chris Murphy, who's the chair of the elementary. This, she, he and I worked together along with actually Fran on the, the teacher negotiations. So I wanted to, I suppose to see if he's staying consistent and with it, or if he's going to appoint someone else. And then I will come back to him, but if you do have an interest, let me know. So with that being said, can I have a motion to adjourn? I was finally, Jay, hold a second.